The special meeting of the zoning board has just been adjourned for the township of Bellville from May 28, 2015 will now come to order. Clark call the roll.
Ezio.
Here.
Del Gersio.
Here.
Lattalana.
Yeah.
Smith.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Mafucci.
Here.
Alano.
Yeah.
Del Gersio.
Here. Everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I wanted to make sure you were here.
Look, I'm like two peoples.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Madam Secretary, has notice of this meeting been given in accordance with sunshine law?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, notice was given to the president in accordance with the open public meetings act.
Okay, uh, okay, let's go right to our first case if we're ready.
We're ready.
ZB 2015 dash oh nine.
Good evening, Frank J. Coserelli, attorney of the district. For your developers, partners with Group B Development.
For the record, let me state that I did review a group of publications. State here to be in order. Okay, so this is seventy-eight one oh two Washington Avenue. It's a proposal to amend to five stories on Washington Avenue and six stories facing the rear of the property, where seven stories facing Washington Avenue and eight stories facing the rear, which was previously approved by ZB 2005 oh two. Also is changing the restaurant to thirty-seven and fifty square feet of commercial space or is it staying as a restaurant?
Staying as a restaurant.
So that's an average, that's changed.
That's an average.
Okay, so it's staying as a restaurant, the same amount of square footage?
Same amount of square footage.
Okay, thirty-seven hundred and fifty square feet, so that's a correction.
Okay.
Now, so we have this straight that it doesn't have to be rehearsed. This has been done as ZB 2005 oh two, but is, the state has extended the amount of time that they have to have this approval. Am I correct, gentlemen?
I've written to Mr. Di Lorenzo about this specific approval, which is the ZB 2005 dash two approval where use variance was granted, and he confirmed that in fact the use variance continues under the permit extension act and whatever other laws they've...
I just want to get that on the record so nobody can have any problems, but plus after that, we did approve a site plan.
It did approve a site plan and we are, this is essentially...
An amendment to that site.
An amendment to the site plan, so it's largely an engineering case because we are, what we've done is we've actually reduced the mass of the building by reducing, reducing it from eight stories to six stories in total. If you count the parking deck that was previously approved, it was three stories of parking above and below grade, and then there were five stories of dwelling units above that. What we've done is we've reconfigured the building. It's the same footprint, it occupies exactly the same area. The parking is going to be on two levels, one with ingress and egress on grade from Washington Avenue, one with ingress and egress on grade from William Street.
Let the record show that Mr. Giordano has arrived.
Sorry, late.
Want to start again?
So, so to reiterate what, what we've said, Mr. Giordano, so that you are fully versed on the record, is that this is actually a continu-, this case is seeking a modification and we're seeking to modify the plan, not to change the use that was previously approved, but to change essentially the bulk of the building. The parking is remaining the same, we actually might have improved the parking configuration a little bit better. The restaurant use will continue per the plan, the approval that was previously granted in 2005 and 2007, and we've actually shrunk the building in terms of its height by reducing it by one story.
And you kept the same amount of units?
Same amount.
My friend.
Correct.
And the same square footage of the restaurant, but I don't know if there was a change or that there may have been an effect then, but you do not need a variance from my understanding anymore for parking?
Not for restaurant use.
Right.
Restaurant...
At that time, I thought they may have, and now they don't have.
I don't think so.
And eliminated it then too?
Yeah, I don't think it did.
All right.
Even though it was, that ordinance, which, which, if you want it tied back to a specific event, it was when Osola Dominion, and there was an issue with parking at Osola Dominion, and the town council passed an ordinance at that time that no parking was required for any restaurant use in the town.
Okay.
So, that's...
Since we're reducing the, not the density, but the use, we're taking down two stories, all it needs is a majority vote of the board.
Okay, so, first witness we're going to call is Mr. Ramo De Popolo.
Mr. Coserelli, could you, so that we'll know where you're going, how many witnesses do you have?
Two. Mr. De Popolo is going to testify on behalf of the applicant, and Mr. Perry Frenzel, who's a professional engineer, will testify with regard to the site plan issues.
Could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, just for the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth, so I can...
Thank you.
Just state your name and spell your last name, please.
It's Ramo De Popolo, D I, couple of P O S, P, L, L.
Thank you.
Mr. De Popolo, you're the original applicant who appeared before the board starting in 2005 with regard to the case number ZB 2005 dash two for the premises known as seventy-eight dash one oh two Washington Avenue, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and at that time, did you appear before the board to obtain a use variance for the development of an eighty-unit apartment building combined with a restaurant use at this location of seventy-eight dash one oh two Washington Avenue?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Can I interject, and I think, because me and the attorney have discussed this before, and we want to put this on the record. I want to make it clear that Mr. De Popolo was a former member of this board. Does anybody have a problem ruling objectively before the law? No, okay, I just want that on the record, that's all, so let me bring it up later.
Thank you. Mr. De Popolo, at another point in time, did you apply to the board for a site plan approval whereby the lots which were designated as in block sixty-seven as eighteen, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four were consolidated into a single lot?
That is correct.
So now you get one tax bill which reflects that this is one large tract of land, is that correct?
That is correct.
And Mr. De Popolo, I direct your attention to, and I'm going to ask if you mark this...
Is this a copy of what we have?
It's a copy of what we have.
It's not been modified anyway.
Not been modified.
We don't need to mark it, just refer to the page.
These are the architectural plans that were submitted to the board by Ate Architecture of New York, Michael Wazowski. Mr. Wazowski is indicating that this, the project will consist of a total of forty-eight one-bedroom apartments, is that correct?
Yes.
And there'll be thirty-two two-bedroom apartments, and how many floors will this occupy? Four. How many parking floors are there?
Two.
You want to show you what's marked as, or what's identified as A two on the Ate Architecture plans, is that a typical floor plan?
That's exactly correct.
And is this the typical parking layout?
Correct.
Showing the Washington Avenue layout and the William Street layout. So this is, this would be the William Street layout on the lower part of the plan, is that correct?
Correct.
Because the entrance comes in and out of William Street, and this would be the part of the parking proposal for, on the Washington Avenue site where the ingress and egress comes from the southmost portion of the building, is that correct? Mr. De Popolo, other than, when you first obtained approval on behalf of Group B, the building was tall, wasn't it?
Yes.
Now we're proposing a different type building, isn't that correct? How many floors of residential dwelling units are there?
Four.
Four floors, and how many floors of parking?
Two.
So it's a total of six stories altogether, including the William Street grade site, before you had a total of eight, is that correct? You're still proposing to use the area on the great, Washington Avenue grade level part of the property at the William and Washington intersection for a restaurant purpose. Mr. De Popolo, is this project going to be built?
Yes.
You partnered up with a company called Premier Developers, and they're going to be working with you on this connection with the project, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, have you reviewed the, have you reviewed this application and you understand that, let me rephrase that, presently, how is the property used?
It's used as a used car dealership.
Okay, and is that used car dealership going to be abandoned when this project commences construction?
That is correct.
Is the used car dealer presently on a month-to-month lease, is that the reason that you can control that?
That is correct.
All right, so whatever approvals may have existed with regard to the use of that site as a used parking lot will now dissipate and be abandoned, isn't that correct?
Correct.
And that's once you start to pull your building permits and you start your demolition, correct?
That is correct.
I have no further questions, Mr. De Popolo.
Any questions by members of the board? Mr. Alano.
Same amount of units, correct?
That is correct.
What change configuration line, is it more one-bedroom now or same configuration?
I believe they are smaller room. Apartment is...
Same one-bedroom, same amount of one, same amount of two, right?
I think the mix is slight, it's slightly different because we've reduced it to, there's more one-bedrooms than there are two.
More one-bedroom, right.
Can you tell us an exact total?
He said forty...
I think it was forty, forty, forty-eight.
Forty-eight, thirty-two, exactly.
Before was forty-four.
Forty and forty, so for me, I'm more, I'm happier with more one-bedroom, as I'm sure, I gave Mr. De Popolo a hard time about that last night, so I'm happier than smaller, it's more one-bedroom. That's all the other question I have.
Yes, Mr. Mafucci.
I'm trying to remember back to the old plans. Was there a driveway going out to Washington Avenue then?
There was a driveway, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions by members of the board? Questions by members of the public? Mr. Fran Antoni, name and address, please.
Benjamin Fran Antoni, one twenty-nine Mount Protestant Hill.
If you want to see the plans, you can come up.
No, I wanted to, I want to ask, how many total parking spaces?
I believe it is a hundred and fifty-two.
One fifty-five.
Nine fifty-five, I'm sorry.
One fifty-five?
Yes.
Now, the, I think you just testified that the question you were just asked, was there an entrance on Washington Avenue in the previous plans?
Yes.
There was?
Yes.
Sure, it wasn't just on William Street?
No, because we applied, that's why, you know.
And the, I heard testimony that the Washington Avenue parking will be on grade?
Correct.
So that parking will all level the same grade of Washington Avenue?
That's right.
And how many parking spaces, metered parking spaces will we lose for your access to the Washington Avenue parking lot?
I believe one.
Just, just one?
I believe on three hundred feet, it is only one parking, one meter.
Well, will the Washington Avenue, will that be an entrance and exit?
Yes.
And only one parking spaces?
Well, it is only one meter.
It's thirty, it's thirty feet from the curb cut and the dimension of the opening, the dimension of the opening is only about twenty, and the curb cut, the curb cut should be thirty, so...
So it's eighteen and eighteen.
Eighteen and eighteen.
Thirty-six, nineteen and nineteen, and everyone is...
There's existing driveways on there.
But there's already existing driveways, Mr. Fran Antoni.
You're busting off, like this.
Right.
So we're going to look to, and on the William Street side, is that also ingress and egress?
Yes.
And that'll be below grade?
That is correct.
And the restaurant's on grade on Washington Avenue too?
Yes.
Right, well, a half of it?
Thirty-seven hundred and fifty-five.
Yeah, but the, the parking, is that, that's on grade, is that the same level as the restaurant?
Yes.
So part of the building, the restaurant part, will be parking on Washington Avenue, so.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions by members of the public? Any further questions by members of the board? Mr. Giordano.
The stipulations we had the last time, they would all still be in effect, like the cameras that were...
Yeah.
Yes.
Should be there.
Unless we change it tonight.
No, I'm just curious.
Everything that was previously made, made a condition, unless we change it tonight, remains, and I would also add the, if this is approved, at the car dealership, it'd be abandoned, so it doesn't come back and bite us, once they start on the project.
Mr. Ray, we have no issue with that, so long as the abandonment coincides with pulling the demolition.
Absolutely. Any other questions? None. Okay, you may call your second witness.
Mr. Perry Frenzel.
Evening.
Mr. Frenzel, would be sworn, please, he's a... He's being offered as an expert as a professional engineer.
With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth, so I can...
I do.
Just state your name and spell your last name, please.
Perry Frenzel, F R E N Z E L.
Have you ever appeared before this board?
I haven't, I haven't.
Why don't you give us a couple of minutes of background?
Mr. Frenzel, remember I warned you about having to remember what your resume said before I came here? Now's your time.
I'm a graduate in civil engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology, I hold a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, that was granted in nineteen seventy-seven. I have been a licensed professional engineer and professional planner in the state of New Jersey since nineteen eighty-three, both of those licenses are current.
Then we could accept them as an exception. Have you ever appeared before in the board?
Many, many times.
Okay, can, can you name one or two?
Sure, Newark, New Jersey City.
Perfect, good. This is from both a planner and an engineer?
Yes.
Yeah, I, we're really not going to go into the plan, because...
That's already been a pool.
It's already been a pool. We're going to try and stick, I'm trying to surgically present this because I know it's a special. Mr. Frenzel, I'm going to come over here and I'd ask you to come closer to the plan. First of all, so we're clear, Plan A one on the easel, A two, A three, I think that's it, A three, are three pages, those are architectural plans, correct?
They are.
And they were prepared by Ate Architecture, is that not correct?
Ate Architecture by the architect Michael Wazowski.
And you relied on these plans in preparing the engineering plans that we've submitted to the board, which are entitled Site Plan for One Hundred Washington Avenue, C Block eight five oh three, Lot six, seven, eight, nine, ten, which we now know as one single lot, correct?
That is correct.
And I would like to ask you, did you, in preparing for your testimony tonight, review the architectural plans and rely on the information that was contained in there and then re-verify the information based on your own observations?
Yes, we did.
How many units are being presented to the board this evening?
Total of eighty units, forty-eight would be one-bedroom and thirty-two would be two-bedroom.
And based on that computation, that mix of one and two bedrooms, did you come up with a computation of the total parking requirement for the site?
Yes, we did.
Is that shown on your plan?
It's shown on the site plan sheet, with the third sheet in the set.
Is it labeled in any way?
It's in the zoning table on the right side of the sheet, the ten is parking residential, shows a calculation based on one point eight spaces for one-bedroom unit, two spaces for two-bedroom, and there are a total of a hundred and fifty spaces.
Can I interject now? Can we square in Mr. Di Lorenzo's question? Frank, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth? Yes. The record, Frank Lorenzo, zoning officer, construction official of the township of Bellville. Mr. Di Lorenzo, based upon the computations that were just mentioned, do we need one point eight, parking spaces per unit, or do we need two based upon the town ordinance?
Well, we, the town is two.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, RSIS is one point eight.
So which is required, that it doesn't need a, or need a variance?
It's the same variance you've already granted.
Yeah.
So we're relying on the fact that that variance continues because the total number of units has not changed.
Okay.
And our contention is that we don't need to re-prove, we don't need to reintroduce proofs on the variance for this establishing that we've complied with the variance previously granted, and that's the purpose of this test.
That was one point eight.
It was one point eight was the computation that was used in the last...
We provided a hundred and four.
We provided a hundred and fifty-five in total. Mr. Frenzel, could you please testify today?
Let me ask one more thing, Mr. Di Lorenzo, before you go. Mr. Di Lorenzo, on your denial letter dated March twenty-sixth, okay, on the bottom where it says to follow in our variance approvals or any other variance approvals the board may find on the hearing, number two, C bulk variance, is that because it was commercial?
Right.
And therefore the twelve are not required anymore, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, I just want to get that out of the record.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Frenzel, what's the total number of parking spaces that are being provided in this plan?
One hundred and fifty-five.
Okay, now, I'd like to, just have you go through page by page, in, your, your plan, succinctly, well, let's go to the architectural plan. Mr. De Popolo testified that the, that Plan A two in the Ate Architecture plan shows a typical floor plan, and is that how you arrived at the count of the mix of ones and two bedrooms?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and A two also shows the parking configuration, correct?
Correct.
And the parking configuration shows ingress and egress to the parking areas in the building, correct?
That is correct.
And you, you use that for purposes of developing your engineering plans, is that correct?
Yes, we did.
Okay, now, let's go to your engineering plans. We're going to skip the very lovely colored first page with the aerial view, and we're going to go to the first page of your plan set. Describe what's shown on the first page.
The second sheet is titled, it's titled Existing Conditions Reable Plan. This is very simply the survey of the property, showing the meets and bounds and physical features on the property and in the vicinity of the property, and those features that will be removed as part of the demolition process in preparation for construction. This is largely a flat piece of property, it's generally flat, it slopes slightly downward from the south to the north, the highest corner being in the southwestern, and the point where the entrance would be off of William Street about twelve feet north.
So these existing conditions also would be altered, obviously, once this project is approved or the board would approve this modification, the existing academy would be taken down, the existing building would be taken down, which is a small little structure in the middle of the property, and the excavation and grading would take place to start construction, is that fair to say?
That's correct.
Let's go to the next page and finish in what?
Mark, you're going to start that page. On William Street, doesn't the grade go down as you go east?
It does.
Twelve feet? Twelve feet?
Yeah, from this point on, Washington Avenue to the lowest point on William is about twelve feet.
What about from on the corner where the restaurant is down?
I believe from the restaurant down, it's probably about three to four feet.
Three to four feet, okay. Go ahead, tell me.
We can go to the next page, what's, what did you, what does your plan show on the third page of the set?
The third page of the set is titled Site Plan, and this is the sheet that shows the, the outline of the building and any improvements that are proposed as far as the, the streetscape in general. It shows the trash room on the lower level, that would be a compactor room where trash would be either collected individually or through chutes in the building, compacted, bagged, and then held until it was pickup day, when it's put out to the curb for pickup. It shows three points of entry into the building by pedestrians, this one being into the restaurant area.
We're, we're on the record, so when we say this one, we're talking at the northmost corner of the building at the intersection of William and Washington.
That's correct.
Now, when you say the lower level, that's where the trash is going to be, that would be the lower level of the garage, am I correct?
That's correct.
Does that mean that the restaurant is two levels or one level?
One.
One.
All right, so can you explain how the garbage is getting down to the lower level?
Generally, in multi-family developments like this, there are one or two points of collection on each floor and chute, probably because the, the compactor rooms on this end, there'd probably be a point at that end of the corridor where people would simply drop their garbage into a chute and have it in this room.
Now, the garbage for the restaurant, will that be included in that?
I don't think it's gotten to the point of that discussion, but it certainly could be.
We can comply with staff requirements on that issue.
Well, the reason is the garbage got to go someplace.
It's got to go someplace, and we've, we've created a fairly large capacity facility here.
But it's at the lower level where this restaurant is, that's why I'm asking the question.
Okay. It's going to have to be brought there somehow, and our view of it is that we'd rather have it in the lower level where it's parking and away, it's further away from the residential users if we keep it there.
Well, I have no problem with that, I just wanted to...
Yeah, we're going to have to...
...explanation of how we're going to do this, that's all.
There was no conveyor belt that I know of.
Parachute, no parachute.
We're not doing parachutes, Mr. Alano says, but...
Well, will there be a connection to the chute from the upper garage level?
There probably will be.
Where it could be coming?
A point of, I think Mr. Frenzel was saying exactly that when he testified before, because if you come, there'll be, there'll be some area of this restaurant, this area which is called the restaurant, where it goes out into the garage. So there'll have to be a back entrance that'll have access to what'll be a drop into the trash facilities.
Again, the northward most entrance off of Washington Avenue would serve the restaurant area, the center point of entry is actually the core of the residential units above, it has an access stair as well as two elevators for the residents to access, and the third point of entry on the southern end is the code-required second means of emergency stairs there.
Now, you had mentioned in, in passing that there was, what's shown on this page is some streetscape, I'm going to go back to the architectural plan, and I think what we want to look at is the third page, something on the stage. We look at page A three of the architectural plan, we'll see in the schematic level drawing that there's a series of trees that are shown on that, is that the type of trees that when we talk about streetscape, we're talking about those kinds of plantings?
Yes, it is, these are the trees that would be planted as per sho-, as shown on the landscape plan, they would also be planted according to the scheme, shown on the sheet A two, which depicts the paper, concrete pattern, floor, the entire frontage of the building, the street bits, and the other streetscape's features. for the entire frontage of the building, the street bits and the other streetscape's features. That is lined according to the architect, uh, being in accordance with the township's streetscape.
All right. So we'll go back to your plan. Go to the next page, please. Okay, what's next?
The next sheet is titled Grading and Drainage Plan. Uh, this particular sheet, um, in the normal plan set where we have green space and parking lots on the outside, uh, which shows, shows the grading of the site, uh, the drainage features and, uh, how the water is captured on the surface. This site is basically covered 100% with building. So there is, uh, no particular grading to be shown on this sheet. All of the drainage from the roof would be collected and discharged into the combined sewer in Williams Street. Uh, that is the, the general drainage scheme for the site.
Is there adequate water supply?
Uh, there is, there's a water main as shown on actually the next sheet. Uh, on the other side of Washington Avenue, uh, the intention is to tie into that line and bring that into the center core to supply whatever water is needed for firefighting and, uh, disposal of water purposes.
We're going next sheet, please. Excuse me, can you repeat about the roof drainage?
Roof drainage will be collected internally, not discharged on the ground. And it will be piped right into the storm main in Williams Street. Uh, this sheet is the utilities plan and it basically reiterates what I just said. Uh, here is the point of connection for the water to the main on the opposite side of Washington Avenue. Uh, sanitary waste and storm runoff would be piped separately to the combined sewer on Williams Street. And the reason for separately is always, uh, if the town at some point in time should be funded to separate the system, the capability is right there to tie in. Now, this sheet is the landscape plan. Uh, what it shows are the street trees to be planted in accordance with the streetscape plan of the municipality. Uh, and if there's a small area here inside the property line in front of the face of the building, that would be used for landscaping.
Mr. Harris?
Yeah.
This plan should reflect the streetscaping as the architect's plan did, so it doesn't do that, the payers and that, so.
We can amend it.
You need to amend it to mimic the architect's plan. I also spoke to someone in his office, he was going to, about the storm drainage. I asked him if he would.
Before you continue, Mr. Harris, can we square you in because I don't want there to be a problem later on. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth, so we got.
I do.
The record Tom Harris, who is an engineer.
And I, uh, so this, this page of, you know, the architect's plans showing the streetscaping, the, uh, I also talked to, uh, someone in his office about maybe putting some, uh, uh, planting beds along the face of the building to kind of soften it up a little bit because, you know, it's 100% pervasive coverage as it is. And, uh, the lights, if you notice, the, uh, the town has a new light standard. The town in front of the municipal building, there's a sample one there, so that's what, what happened to them as far as lighting.
We can work with, Mr. Franzel, can we handle that with, uh, Mr. Harris and the staff to come up with the necessary?
Absolutely.
Mr. Harris, did you put that in your report, stated April 17th?
Well, the lights, they just put the light standard up last week.
Last week.
Oh, absolutely.
But everything else was in your report?
Well, I think, uh, it was in my previous report, which, which was referenced in my last report.
Of March 20th, from August 7th?
There's one from August 7th.
That's where you put the land, uh, streetscaping in there.
I have a question, while we're still in the garage area. How is there going to be security provided for tenants for the garage area?
Peter.
We're going to have camera systems and.
He's got some. Why don't you come on up?
Do you know, can you answer?
Okay, why don't you, uh, just bring it in, please, can you raise your right hand with regard to this application? You swear the comment you're about to make, should be the truth.
I do.
Just state your name and spell your last name.
Peter Tiflinsky, last name is T as in Tom, I F as in Frank, L I N S K Y.
And how are you related to this project?
Um, I am the owner of Premier Developers and partnered up with Remo to finally get this building off the ground.
Okay. Are the issues with the security?
Do we maybe just finish?
All right. You can sit down. I thought he wouldn't have an answer.
He does.
As an engineer, I'm not going anywhere.
He does, he, he probably doesn't have that answer readily available, but we can supply the answer. Uh, you want to fix these so that you're not? You can just take them and then put them on the next one there.
This is the landscape plan that we just discussed.
And of course, we can comply with Mr. Harris's requirement. Now, the suggestion of putting in some other, I, I wasn't clear on what you exactly wanted, Tom.
A small strip of, uh, plantings or flowers along the face of the building, so.
Okay, okay. So we create a strip of dirt and we can plant in the strip of dirt or a couple of plander boxes, either one?
Up against the face of the building, low level plants.
We can manage it. Okay, next page of your plan, how's it identified?
This sheet is simply the soil erosion and sediment control plan that will be filed with the local district.
And we comply?
Yes, we do.
Next page, please.
Uh, the next page is simply construction details for various features of the, uh, the site improvement itself, the handicap parking, the handicap sign, connection to the, uh, the water service, et cetera, et cetera.
Now, I'd like to go back to the page of your plan set that feels, shows the ingress and egress to parking areas. So, uh, describe again how this plan is labeled so we can start with this.
Okay, um, this plan shows again the closed five-story, eighty apartment, uh, structure. It gives the elevation of the basement floor at 94.35 and the elevation of the grade level floor at 105.18. Uh, it shows a point of entry at the southerly end of Washington Avenue confronted, uh, in this particular area. That would be the entrance point into the upper floor, the one that's at 105.18. And also shows a curb cut, uh, in the northeast corner of the property adjacent to Williams Street, which is the lowest point in the topography on the site where the entrance would be into the lower level garage.
All right. Now, how far is the entrance and exit area for Washington Avenue from the intersection of William and Washington?
Approximately 320 feet.
And how far is the entrance area to the Williams Street parking garage from the intersection of the corner of Washington and William?
Approximately 85 feet.
And, um, can, in, in this particular configuration, can controls be placed in to limit at, uh, turning in different directions leaving the property? So for example, if one was leaving on Washington Avenue, restrict turns to right-hand turns only as exiting from Washington Avenue?
Sure, that, that's not a problem. At the point of exit from the garage, um, both places there would be minimally a stop sign. And if there is a need, where there is a need to limit turns onto Washington Avenue, there would be no left turn sign as well inside the face of the building at the point of discharge from the garage.
Now, I'd like to ask you a question about the Department of Transportation and its involvement in this application, if any. Have you investigated that?
We have.
And what were your findings and what is your opinion with regard to securing the necessary permits from the Department of Transportation to allow ingress and egress from Washington Avenue?
Washington Avenue is a state highway, uh, highway number seven. And as such, we have to apply to the Department of Transportation for a highway access permit. Uh, given the preliminary discussions that were had with the department and the understanding of what kind of traffic would be generated from this facility, uh, we've been told that it would be simply a minor access permit.
There's already curb cuts all along Washington Avenue that are used by the used car lot, isn't that correct?
There are.
Um, I have no further questions of the witness.
Any members of the board have questions? Mr. Gucci.
Uh, the storm water and sewer, did you say it's combined?
It is in the street, yes.
Okay. I guess it depends on what part of town you're in. On the other side, it's not. Okay. You mentioned the garbage, any mention about recycling? It's not. Tom, is it not combined?
No, there's no combined sewers at all in Bell Hill.
I stand corrected, that was the information I had gotten, which is our staff.
Well, it's better than it's not anyway.
Well, we're discharging.
Yeah, so I'm hoping out that answer.
We are discharging separately from the building, so there will be connections to the sanitary and there will be connections to the storm.
So the design is not, the, the building design is separate discharge and you'll tie into the separate systems?
Yes.
So we clarify that, thank you. So, Mr. Mufu, Jim, sorry. The last question was about recycled.
Recycling can be handled, uh, through the same transfer act of room as well. Um, I assume residents would be, uh, told they are required to recycle recyclables would be delivered to this room. Um, I don't think there would be a separate chute, but I would, uh, from other similar developments that I've seen, the residents would be required to deposit their recyclables in this area and not.
And it's a large enough area to handle recycling also?
It is.
On the parking levels, what's the aisle with these two?
24 feet.
Okay. This, I'm not sure if you'd be able to answer or not. Will the parking spots be assigned to an apartment? Yes. And so I assume a tandem one would be assigned to a single unit?
Double.
No, a double unit. The two-bedroom unit will have a tandem. I just meant to one apartment. One apartment will have a tandem spot. And there're going to be no fights over park, tandem parking spaces? I have fights with my kids over tandem parking spaces in my driveway. You may have to handle this through our building department, but we recently were told we have phenomenal number of affordable housing units in town, which I think we're going to go to court on. I don't know how many affordable units would be required in an eighty unit. He can't answer that. No, I didn't know if Mr. Harris or.
We'd have to leave it a condition in, in, in the resolution to see if they have to meet the affordable housing, whatever we're going to.
There are contributions.
Yes.
There are contributions to affordable housing.
They're offset that, that way.
Okay. I don't think anybody knows what the contribution, what the computations are. Fall back to the.
There's a figure, Frank, there is some, uh, it's been a while since we approved a report like this.
Well, is there, is there an ordinance in existence that says how many have to be set aside?
There's no, there's no plan, there's no plan that they, because we always had, Gump always had zero.
Had zero requirement.
So there, but there was a contribution to the affordable housing.
Can we work that out with them?
Yeah, make it a condition on the, on the resolution, I would put it.
That was it, thank you. I, I have to say, I mean, I think we're, we're relying on the, the unit computation that existed before, which did not have any requirements for affordable housing contribution in it, and that's what we're relying on. So we have no intention of complying with that contribution. And if it means that we have to have a fight with somebody other than the township, we'll do it.
Well, since there's nothing in effect right now.
That's my point.
Uh, I, I don't think we can put an imposition on, on the application. I don't know, I'm asking the attorney, he would know better than me, it's a legal question.
It, it's a, it's a, it's an unknown as to what's going to happen. I'll try to record something and, uh, no one really knows where it goes going in any town.
Okay, now, now, now my question is technically this. If there is no requirement right now in effect, you can't go back.
It'd be awkward to, um, to do that.
To go, you mean to go back, I mean. So, so technically, can we put something in a resolution? And we can't, I don't think we can.
I don't think it will.
No, you should put it in a resolution.
I'm sorry.
It's not a law, you should put it in.
Right.
I think.
It has to be what the laws, the effective time.
I think in this case, you can't speculate, you're, you're required to apply standards. There are no standards to apply, so therefore you can't impose something where there are no standards.
I agree, I only agree also, I think at this point, the project has been approved.
Thank you. I.
We'll leave it out, if there's an issue later that someone wants to fight about, we'll fight about it.
That'd be, that'd be our preference, thank you very much.
The witness containing this.
Yes.
I, I had said the witness, I concluded with my.
You concluded, so any other questions by members of the board? Any questions by members of the public of the witness based upon testimony given, Mr. Fran and Tony?
Uh, yes, I just want to clarify the, uh, what's the depth of the property along the Williams Street side?
Hold on, now we got to stop. Tape that.
Go ahead.
Okay.
What is the depth of the property along the Williams Street side?
Approximately 89 feet.
All right, you answered the question by, where is the entrance on Williams Street from Washington End? And you said 85 feet, so we're having a four-foot entrance?
No, the, the way I interpreted the question was where is that driveway into the building in comparison to the, the intersection of the street pavement? There's about a 24 sidewalk out in front of this building, so that, when added to the 89 feet, gets us about 80 or 85 feet back from the point of the intersection.
At the beginning of the curb cut for an entrance from the Washington Avenue?
Approximately 80, 85 feet.
85 feet?
Yes.
But the whole property is only 89 feet?
But it's about 20 feet more than that to Washington Avenue.
Sidewalk.
Well, I have the property on Washington Avenue, it's 14 feet. The sidewalks on Washington are 14 feet, setback.
Okay, so it's a five-foot difference, it's about 80 feet from the point of the curb line of Washington Avenue to the nearest point of that entrance into the lower level.
Well, your math doesn't add up. How wide is the driveway cut on Williams Street, the same as Washington Avenue?
It's the same, it's a 30, 30-foot curb cut and a 24-foot driveway aisle.
So if you got an 89-foot lot and take away 30, you're 59 feet from Washington Avenue.
Right.
Not 85 feet.
No, you're, you're 59 feet from the front property line.
From the beginning of the driveway cut.
Right, but you still have the sidewalk width to get to where it's actually Washington Avenue direction.
And is there going to be like on Washington Avenue, right turn only coming out of the Williams Street site?
No, that's not contemplated at this time, West of Town deems otherwise.
So coming out of Williams Street, you can make a right or a left?
Right or left is planned right now.
All right. I, I also want some more clarification on the garbage thing. How is the garbage, the collection in this bowl, how is the garbage going to be? How is the garbage, the collection in this bowl, how is the garbage gonna be collected? In separate cans or an dumpster?
No, it actually goes into a hopper that feeds into a compactor to make it easier to handle. The compactor obviously reduces the volume, bags it, and those bags are set on the side and then moved out for curbside pickup at the appropriate time.
That's for the apartments?
Right.
Now, how about the food waste for the restaurant?
I believe the food waste could be handled in the same way.
The township is going to pick up the food waste?
It can be separated in the compactor room, and there can be arrangements made with a private contractor to pick up the restaurant waste.
We have two garbage collections a week. Is the food waste only gonna be collected twice a week, the same collection days?
I don't have an answer for that, that's, that has to do with the restaurant operator, actually.
And the recycling, I wasn't happy with the answer to recycling. Are there gonna be separate containers for recycling?
There'll be a separate, there'll be separate containers accessible in the compaction room for recyclable.
All right, and the final question, how will the garbage people in this compactor, how will they get to it? If the food is required to pick up by a private contractor, what provisions are made for a private contractor to get at this food waste?
The private contractors, it can happen a few different ways. A private contractor can have a key to the compaction room. The private contractors can have a predetermined time and days of the week at which time the building maintenance personnel will have the available open or let them in when they arrive.
Any other questions by members of the public? Any further questions by members of the board? I think you could call your third witness.
There are no other witnesses. Oh, you need the third witness about security, Mr. Peter Toflinsky. He's not an expert, he's...
I understand.
There was a question, Mr. Toflinsky, you were sworn before about the security that would be provided in the garage areas. Can you please explain in detail how that would be done?
Besides from the camera system that would be installed throughout the garage system, excuse me, throughout the garage and the exterior of the building, we were also planning on putting drop gates, the translucent lens, so that would act as full security for all our garage entrance and exit points, and they would be controlled by either a simple remote control or a sticker that would go on a window that would read infrared to the garage opener.
Okay, is there also the possibility you might use a code to get in or out or not?
A code meaning that somebody would have to get out of their car to open the garage?
Or that there would be a thing next to you that at the passenger side going in, you'd be able to press the code with the window?
I think that's a problem, Joey, only because it would be in the public right of way.
I also think there's a lot better technology today than...
Whatever, whatever you wanna go with.
Yeah, no, we're gonna go with the latest technology.
And what if the restaurant people can't get in there?
No, no, it's strictly for the residents of the building, and like we said before, the parking spots are going to be assigned, one per one-bedroom or tandem for the two, so everybody's gonna have their...
Now, how many tandems do you have?
I don't know, any old question.
I think it's a hundred and fourteen.
Fourteen.
Hundred and fourteen.
Anytime.
Thirty-eight, thirty-eight, two-bedroom.
Hundred and fourteen, sounds good.
That's not the question. What, for tandem units? The tandem spaces, how many is it?
That's the count.
So it's a hundred and fourteen, so is it a total hundred and fourteen tandems? Or is it a hundred and fourteen divided by two?
Divided by two.
Yeah, so it's a hundred and fourteen divided by two, which is a hundred fifty-seven spots.
Fifty-seven tandems.
Fifty-seven tandems equalling a hundred and fourteen spots.
So you only have, if I remember correctly...
Forty-eight, thirty-two, thirty-two two-bedrooms, so we're over...
So that's what I'm saying, how are the other tandems gonna be assigned?
It's just additional parking for the building. They will not be for the restaurant.
All right, how many single ones do you have?
Single, if I...
We're not doing the parking areas, are we?
Forty-five.
No. But this is gonna be a condition, but they're gonna have to be labeled.
No, it's signed, that's the only condition.
Huh?
It's signed, that's it.
It's assigned, yes. But what I'm saying is, what are you gonna assign to each tandem?
Forty-five. It's forty-five single spaces.
And how many single units is there?
Forty-two.
There was more singles than there was doubles.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight singles.
There's forty-eight single units. And how many parking spaces? Single parking spaces?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, okay.
Is that what you said? Oh, you said forty-five.
Right.
Well, there would be extra tandem spaces, you could use...
No, no, I'm saying, but they said total parking is one-fifty.
There's a total of five spaces more.
Forty-five and one-fourteen. More, what, singles? One-fifty.
Is that a handicap?
There's handicaps, you have a mixture of this.
There's eight handicaps, more and four, I know that from...
Come out of the mix.
So that's included in the total number of spaces?
One-fifty-five.
Yes.
I'm just saying, because if the tandems aren't assigned, there's certain ones that are not gonna be assigned.
We can handle it by rule and then, and by designation. There are gonna be some people that may not have a card, but we can handle by rule who's assigned to what spot. It'll be designated by unit.
All right. Any other questions by members of the board? Questions by members of the public of this witness? None, okay, is any member of the, you're done then?
Yes.
Any member of the public wish to give testimony on this case? Mr. Fran Antoni.
Let me swear you in, Mr. Antoni, to give your testimony. Why don't you... Well, it's up to him. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony that you may give show me the truth, so?
I do.
Okay, just again, state your name for the record.
Vincent Fran Antoni.
Thank you.
Board President, I just ask you to really seal in concrete the plans for the garbage in the whole. It's a problem. Right up the street walk through, I have a problem with a restaurant next door to my place. I want some definite plans that you're gonna impose on them, how that food waste is gonna be removed, and if it's gonna be removed daily, and by who. Now, the forty-three years down this building, thirty-five, no problem until I got a restaurant there. They are not complying with the law, although they should. And I've never had ants and mice, and now I got both, I had to make complaint to the health department.
But how are they not complying?
Because they bring, we only have two garbage collect, like they testified, they don't let the town garbage collection figure out. We have two a week. The restaurant is keeping it for three or four days between garbage collection. In the ninety, eighty, ninety degree temperature, it smells, and they put it in double, where?
Where are they keeping it?
They put it outside in the yard. Now, this is gonna be inside in the parking garage, which can contain the odor of your morgue. My two tenants can't open their kitchen windows from the odor. I made a complaint and an informed complaint to the building inspector just recently.
Can we talk about this, Chris?
But this has to be definite. It's gotta be removed daily, food waste, it can't sit for three or four days. And who's gonna remove it? And where it's gonna be stored from?
Mr. Fran Antoni, as you know, the Board of Health is gonna be involved in this because it's a restaurant. And if they have private removal, they can structure whatever pickup time they want. I would think more than twice a week is, or I would think twice a week's a little low for a restaurant, but they can structure whatever they have to to get this done. I would not want garbage to be outside too long.
Mr. DiLorenzo, how is that handled in the town? So we can have it on the record.
The health department handles it, they have to get the private hold into the...
Okay.
Get a private dumpster.
But the health department would put when it has to be picked up or how often?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can set it...
So that would come under the health department?
Right, we can set a condition too, if you want. You wanna say they need to be picked up at least three times or daily? We don't know, depending on what it's gonna be, how busy it's gonna be, that's what they go by, the volume.
I think they're gonna have to see what kind of business they have to determine whether...
So we could put a condition leaving that up to the health department, correct?
Yeah, you could put it up, the health department may, because I could put it on a zoning permit too, Joe.
Okay, perfect.
You know, both of us.
We'll leave it to your discretion. And the health department.
The health department.
Yes, I agree.
I did flag something definite because I said, we already have regulations in the health department, but in many cases, this is not being enforced.
Well, that's up to the health department to enforce.
Right, but I...
That's not the board's job.
In your approvals, I want something to state that, especially that food waste, there's gotta be a way to control.
Mr. Fran Antoni, we can't impose something if we don't know what's gonna be there. Or how often it may need to be picked up based upon what is going to be there.
They testified, it's only gonna be a restaurant, not commercial. That was the testimony.
I understand.
You asked them specifically.
There's different types of restaurants.
Restaurants, all restaurants serve food.
We're gonna leave it to the health department. We can't micromanage this because we don't know what it's gonna be.
Is it takeout or is it sit-down, too?
Yeah, so we'll leave it to the Board of Health, and if there's problems, that's...
That's where you complain to.
I just hope we don't have that problem there.
Okay.
And as far as the other, I go back to the seventies, I wrote a letter to the zoning board, I approve of this mixed use, but only two floors of apartments. This is a hundred percent impervious coverage, this exceeding density is gonna hurt us in the long run.
Mr. Fran Antoni, it's already been approved ten years ago.
I understand.
And we cannot rule on that.
Just, well, again, they put their testimony, and I just wanted to prove, I approved of these units within our code. When we give all these variances, that's what's gonna hurt us in the long run. So this kind of mixed use is good for the town if done in the proper proportions. I object to this as over-density and over...
That's already been ruled on, it has nothing to do with us tonight.
You can't stop me from making my testimony.
No, because your testimony is based on something from ten years ago, which we have no control over. Now, if they were asking for more than eighty units, then you could open your mouth tonight about that. But this is done and buried. It's ten years old, and us, we have no jurisdiction over that tonight. Only what we have jurisdiction over, please.
And as they refreshed your memory as to what was pre-approved, I'm refreshing my memory of what I previously objected to.
You're welcome. Any other members of the public wish to give testimony? You, Mr. Cross-Examiner, Mr. Fran Antoni, Mr. Pazzarello.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Will you sum up then? If you want.
I think that the proofs are self-evident that this is consistent with the approvals that were previously granted. I think we've managed to streamline the application, streamline the presentation, and I'm not gonna belabor it with a hot wing.
Thank you. Members of the board, your pleasure. On what conditions you wish to impose also?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, approve this with the conditions that we have first approved ten years ago. I'll make sure that they're provided by.
Okay.
And...
As Mr. DiLorenzo said, in going to the health department, whenever they...
Whenever they realize what type of restaurant's gonna be there. And also the remarks of Mr. Harris.
Well, abandoning the used car dealership at the time, the demo permit.
Right.
Tom, did you request that the, that the plans be amended to reflect the architect's streetscape as opposed to...
Yes.
And the lighting.
For our conditions, have planters up against the face of the building.
And the new type of lighting.
The new type of lighting, it's just been approved.
And then the plantings up against the face of the building.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So, for the record, you know, and this application originally came in...
Oh, and one more thing, I want to interrupt you. And the security, the security that was mentioned.
Okay.
That that's going to be in effect. Yes, continue, Mr. Valano, I'm sorry.
It's horrible. So, one of the things I just wanna remind them, that was probably one of the most outspoken on this particular application, in the size and the height, and particularly the height. And so, for myself, I think we've come closer to what I, you know, feel is more amiable, you know. I still have to save my image on that, you know. I think the fact that we increased more one-bedrooms also makes me happy, right? It minimizes the impact. You know, it's, it's not perfect, but it's a good use of this particular piece of time. So, I'm Mr. Giannala, I have no problem.
So you're seconding, seconding?
I am seconding.
Okay, so Mr. Giannala has made the motion, and it's been seconded by Mr. Valano. And I want to mention from ten years ago, I agree with Mr. Valano a hundred percent. I am much more happier that there's more one-bedroom units. And also the concern back then was whether our hook and ladder could reach the roof.
Right.
And now I think we're closer to reaching the roof. So, much closer, yes, two floors difference is a big difference. So, anybody else wish to give a statement on this?
You just had my engineer's report of April seventeen.
Yes. Must be complied with.
Mr. DiLorenzo, did we miss anything on your behalf?
No, I think it's good you can just put my report in there too.
Okay.
Okay, put Mr. DiLorenzo's report in there. Okay.
The color was good then?
Yeah, I think the board's feeling with regard to color was that it's a no.
It's a no issue right now because it's looking at effect.
No.
That's how I look at it.
I agree.
So we have a, is there anything else that has to be added here before we expand?
Frank did indicate and showed me ordinances which apparently are currently in effect for certain types of projects and with the code requirement. I don't know when that came into effect, I don't know if it was in effect that the town decision was originally approved.
Well, let me ask you a question. So, that requirement is on the African, right? So, that's the bottom line, you know, we can't...
Whether we say it or not, it is what it is.
I mean, Mr. Coswell even quite, if we say, oh, well, forget about it. We don't have that authority to say it, forget about it.
No, I think, I think the answer to it is exactly that, that you don't, I'm asking you to not say anything because we have to comply.
So we can get clear here. Mr. DiLorenzo, is there an ordinance?
Well, my thought is this, I wanna finish my thought.
There's an ordinance, I would like to know what ordinance we have.
I wanna finish the thought.
Is that a discussion yet?
Yes, it's already seconded. We're on discussion.
Can I say something to you?
Sure, we're on discussion.
Well, I'm happy to say that this in Bellville is this kind of buildings and restaurants, because I think that Washington Avenue has been dead for ten years.
And I think that's why we approved it ten years ago.
Well, I'm glad something's lit, lightened up here, this way we...
Let me know when you're done. I'll continue when I was...
No, we're on color.
We're on color.
We're on color.
Yeah, color. Go ahead.
Regardless of what this board might think, if there is something in place, we could not dismiss it if we wanted to. That's all I'm saying. We are unsure on what the status is, right? So we shouldn't comment on what the status is. I think the ordinance, if there is one, will be enforced regardless of what we might say or not say. Am I correct, Mr.?
Yes, we don't have to say every other ordinance in the town has to be complied with. It's there. We'll leave that for another day.
I don't know, I don't know.
I'm just asking Mr. DiLorenzo if there's an ordinance, because somebody brought this ordinance up, it wasn't me. But I know there was something that was passed when I was first put on this board, and I'm going back to nineteen eighty-seven, okay? And it was done when Mr. Fran Antoni was a commissioner. I remember the ordinance. And there was a mention that so many units had to be set aside. Now, if that's what Mr. DiLorenzo's talking about, and that ordinance has never been taken off the books, would they have to comply with that, Mr. DiLorenzo? I'm asking you.
No, Joe, it's not that ordinance we're talking about, it's something that's in the zoning.
Okay, well, whatever, if there's an ordinance on the books that has to be complied with, you would take care of that, correct? Okay, well, whatever, if, if there is an ordinance on the books that has to be complied with, you would take care of that, correct?
Right.
So we don't have to deal with it, okay?
That's my point.
Thank you. So let's vote and get this over with.
We cannot circumvent an ordinance.
No, we cannot.
No.
And an ordinance can't circumvent a state statute either, so go ahead.
Okay.
All right, can we have the vote then?
I'm waiting to hear.
The vote is to approve, the vote was, was, the, the approval was, motion was made by Mr. Giannano, seconded by Mr. Valano, with the conditions that have all been listed.
For amended site.
For an amended site plan. Clark, call or roll.
Vizio.
Yes.
Giudano.
Yes.
Montalbano.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Valano?
Yes.
Don Priscilla.
Yes. Approved seven to nothing. There will be a fifteen-minute reset.